They called the meeting to order at seven o'clock. I'd like to open nominations for moderator.
Tom Waite.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I close nominations for moderator. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same. All said aye. I'll select the clerk. It's Susan G. in favor. Would you read the warning, please?
This is the warning of the annual town meeting, Town of Morris, Thursday, June 3rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The electeds of the Town of Morris and those persons eligible to vote in town meetings in said town are hereby warned and notified to meet in the Morris Community Hall, 3 E Street, Morris, Connecticut, on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM for the annual town meeting for the following purposes. One, to elect one regular member to the Regional School, Number 6 Board of Education, for a term of 7/1/21 to 6/30/24. Item two, to elect one regular member to the Regional School District, Number 6 Board of Education, to fill a term ending 6/30/22. Item three, to elect one regular member to the Morris Housing Authority for a term of 7/1/21 to 6/30/26. Item four, to elect one regular member to the Morris Housing Authority to complete a term ending 6/30/25. Item five, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreements with the State of Connecticut and/or Government of the United States of America to apply for and accept any grants that may become available and to expend funds for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Provided, however, no expenditure of town funds may be made without approval of the Board of Finance for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021. Item six, to consider and act upon the town budget in the total amount of $9,104,916, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021. Item seven, as recommended by the Board of Finance, to appropriate a sum not to exceed $231,416.29, of which $76,416.29 shall come from capital nonrecurring and $155,000 shall be from fund balance for the purchase of a 2022 Mack Granite 42FR dump truck. Copies of the town budget were available in the town clerk's office and online at the town's website. Morris, Connecticut, this 25th day of May, 2021, signed by Thomas Waite, Chris Selectman, Erica Dorsett Selectman, Simpson ALO Selectman. Masks will be required only of those who are both unvaccinated and cannot maintain a safe distance from others under Executive Order Number 12. The return notice was signed by Tom and received in the town clerk's office the 26th day of May, 2021.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, only an elected of the Town of Morris or a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more who jointly or separately was liable to the town for taxes assessed against them based on an assessment of less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of the town, or who would have been so liable, if not entitled to an exemption as a blind person or as a veteran or as a widow or parent of the veteran, would be entitled to vote at the meeting. So the first order of business is to elect one regular member to the Regional School District, Number 6 Board of Education, for a term of 7/1/21 to 6/30/24. This is a position that has been occupied by Margie Groh, and that term is ending June 30th. Is there a motion to elect a member to the Board of Ed?
I'd like to make that motion to elect Margie Groh to the Board of Education.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Margie for that position, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Okay, number two, to elect one regular member of the Regional School District, Number 6 Board of Education, to fill a term ending 6/30/22. This is a position currently filled by Denise Swike. We voted her in at a previous town meeting. The term was a little messed up and it should have been a year longer, so we're just filling that term until 6/30/22. Is there a nomination for that position?
I'm nominated Denise Swike.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Denise Swikes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Number three, to elect one regular member to the Morris Housing Authority for a term of 7/1/21 to 6/30/26. I believe Jean Sevicus is currently in that position and would like to continue. Is there any nominations for that position?
I'm nominated Jean.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? 6/30/25 or soon? Or else it's... All those in favor of Jean Sevicus for that position, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Number four, to elect one regular member to the Morris Housing Authority to complete a term ending 6/30/25. And is Susan Harrington currently in that position?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I'm nominated Susan Harrington.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Susan Harrington for that position, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Number five, to authorize, this is kind of a housekeeping, we do it every year, an annual town meeting, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into agreements with the State of Connecticut and/or Government of the United States of America to apply for and or accept any grants that may become available and to expend funds for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Provided, however, no expenditure of Morris town funds may be made without the approval of the Board of Finance for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion on that, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Okay, number six, the big one. To consider and act upon the town budget in the total amount of $9,104,916, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year commenced in July 1st, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Right, Taylor.
Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion to approve the town budget, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
One or two nays? One at least. So move. Number seven, as recommended by the Board of Finance, to appropriate a sum not to exceed $231,416.29, of which $76,416.29 shall be from capital nonrecurring and $155,000 shall be from fund balance for the purchase of a 2022 Mack Granite 42FR dump truck. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make the most of that. Is there a second? Right, Taylor. Any questions on that? Sally?
I'd like to move a paper ballot.
Paper ballot? Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
All those in favor of paper ballot, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You have a show of hands, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I don't believe that's debatable.
For a paper ballot?
Yeah.
I believe it is. We've done it before.
We don't remember.
Is there something we could consult?
Okay, I want to vote paper ballot. All right, we'll go by Sally's expertise of many years of moderating here. Eric?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why it looks so good. No, it's a hard one.
I can't, I can't read the papers.
You gotta check licenses. I'm talking to someone. I'm questioning the board.
I know. My parents, I know, right? Yes. Okay, but they had to look at you and realize it. Yeah, yeah, take a photo. Um, I want to talk about Scott. I have it. Right, and then, um, drivers like me. No. You got, but you want to tell me about some situations. So this way. To bring some of the, you're gonna say. It's me. Come back and drop the thing. We used to use paper stuff a little less. Like you didn't have. Oh, okay.
143?
No. Okay. Hold on. Yes. Selfishness. 39? I know, I was trying to get out to the thing. I can't wait to do it. That was until I saw you. Smile a lot. Oh, it's last two.
Harris? Let's see.
Probably. I just wrote. I'm good. He's mine, nothing. It's just so hard. And she passed the three and the three areas of life. Again. I know, I showed you. Yeah. Nancy is here. Rachel. And Rachel's after our child. Yeah, right. So, based on that. 261 town.
Rachel's after voting, I think. It's Rachel's after voting. My name?
I get the Board of Finance voting, you know?
Say my show.
No.
And Thomas still wrote again. Hello, Larry. Wow, California. I, well, I, I let it go.
Lisa. He's. Christmas.
11 shots in the lane.
If I do something.
Grace doesn't want things. I was like, yeah, right. Hold on, hold on.
It's reasonable. Yeah.
Like, can you talk to me? And Heather was like, what did you ask? Like, what the fuck? That's just, wow. Yeah, everybody said, we're the parents. I'm scared, fuck is that? I say, mom. Let me talk.
Put up a shot? Yeah. And everyone was saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my God, so really happy.
No, 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 don't worry about it.
Yes.
We're in the teaching. What's true?
I said, like, he thought he would get my kids. We could, but that wasn't. Yes or no?
Oh, shit.
Okay. Eighty, forty-two. Okay, great. I see, thank you. Well, I got it. Why you carry one tattoo? See, I don't pull it. Which is better? Well, no, it's.
This is my better shot. What? No, this is definitely my better shot. Oh, is this live? Oh, I'm so embarrassed. I gotta be me. When you go up, try and be nice. Just try and stay the way you are there, because I'm not a nice person. Nope, not, not a nice person. Well, thanks for your vote anyways.
You're welcome.
There, how are you? She got the warning. They got, they got it over.
And she's still ready.
She's very good. She's talking to her mom.
Thank you. Now, now, now. Thank you.
Rachel, please.
Thank you. Seven, I say this. You're so happy and polite.
Six more years.
Six more. That's what you say to me. Come on. There's no plan, I'm happy. I know, I know, that's it. The week of the 28th. I feel if I look, everyone is.
We had one person who buy one year's. Starting fast. Yes, we needed.
Yeah, I fear it was easier to have you guys.
The video?
I mean, sorry, I'm not paying attention. That's my theory.
Yeah, it's getting closer.
Yeah, I figured, too, you could coordinate and do it that way. And then, after Mr. Bruce, I really want to drop it. Do it that way, so. Because we're building on it. Or I tend to figure out what, at least when I can actually lift it, be dropped. Because our tractor's not big enough, we have.
And I would say right there, right below.
Our loader, to pick it up.
Yep. Our loader's so heavy.
What's going to break?
Maybe a bathroom.
Thank you. It's gonna be physically black.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure. You're welcome, thank you. Yeah, I know. I'm looking glass now. One, seven, three, guys. Yes.
All right.
I'm just thinking in front of her, it's my. I'm trying to. I'm having a thing. And we're gonna, we're touching. Audience.
What's your? She's running. I got you. All right, Jamie, line one. Oh, yeah? It's, uh, Roger, yeah.
Just barely. You're lying. Okay. I'm sorry. One. I was like. Oh, yes. I'm, uh, I'm. Let's see your tracks. Yep. That would just like. That's the reason I'm honest.
Like, why? So which one is here? We know the boss.
Well, that's like.
Well, I have here.
Um, but like, I was like.
Oh, it's. Oh. I heard that. I tell you.
I know, it's the other one that all. Okay, adult. Just, yeah, just let it go. I'm gonna take you through there. I know, I looked it up.
Oh, first. And then that probably, so. Yeah. I love cash. Really not the source.
Sounds like.
Yeah. So, um, this is special. Back from France. Back around.
What's it, I was saying? Yeah.
I think that. I'm just like. You know. This is real.
Everybody voted who wanted to vote.
Yes. Okay. So, now you need to, um, to tell each county.
Uh, Chris, the entire. Dave?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, check it off.
You get the no's, I'll take the yes. I got the no? Yeah, you get the no one. That's an exception.
Okay, they tallied the votes. Twenty-eight people voted, eighteen yes, ten no. So the motion passed to purchase the new town truck. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.